Testing, testing.
It's like a comedy skit.
Just testing on this end. Can you hear me?
Very well.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everybody.
Good evening, Bob.
Hey, Bob, you're blasting through our ceilings.
Oh, dear.
It's the voice.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
Okay, if you want, I can sing some of the excerpts of Phantom of the Opera. Would you like to hear?
We do not.
Thank you.
All right, adoption of the agendas. Everyone had a chance to look at the agenda. Are there any changes, updates? Comments? If there are none, if we could have a motion to approve. Second. All in favor?
I'll give it to Ken.
All in favor? So moved. All right, moving on. Adoption of the previous minutes. Does anyone have any changes, comments? Questions about the previous minutes? If there aren't, if someone can make a motion to approve. All right, Melinda. All right, and Marcus seconded all in favor? Hi, so moved. It doesn't look like we have anyone here for public comment, so we will move on to our first item of discussion, discussion and recommendation of special use permit application number 2023-1 for the Marvin Women's Center located at 1000, I get all zeros right, 10004 Newtown Road, Hunter.
Okay, so if you guys recall at the, this was our last meeting in January, we had a text amendment that we updated the definition of religious institutions, set parameters in place for accessory uses and so on, and that was then forwarded on with your guys' recommendation to the village council during the let me try to think about it. Actually, that was a December meeting, I guess. So then during the January council meeting, we held, they held the public hearing. There were a few things that council wanted to potentially change based off of the recommendation and draft that you guys last saw. A few minor things, really, the big, the thing was is that in the recommendation of that language that you guys reviewed and recommended, it basically outlined that no special use permit would be needed if they weren't expanding, either building a new structure or expanding any type of structure. So if any of the buildings on the religious institution site was existing in there, especially this permit wouldn't be needed. With that being said, council did want to actually have that in place, and that was the language that changed. So basically, this is the special use permit for that Marvin's Women's Center applicant that did the text amendment. It's basically to establish now what is that accessory use. That's not necessarily permitted in the Marvin or residential district, and I'm going to go through this, but really, it's kind of the same background and everything as you guys have heard in the past with the text amendment. So the applicant, Larry Sheehan, he's the attorney for the Health Pregnancy Center or and/or the Marvin's Women's Center. The property owner is Banks Presbyterian, and it's the location of the old village hall at 10004 Newtown Road. And their request is basically to allow for a nonprofit women's counseling center to operate property owned by Banks Presbyterian and located at the recent address. I'll put the memo here for you guys. Going through this, so the background is basically once generic background is once they new village hall, our current village hall that we were in was finishing up last year, Banks Presbyterian was looking to find a new tenant for old village hall. The women's, the Health Pregnancy Center was interested and wanted to open up a facility here in Marvin at the time. Based off of our previous ordinance, basically, it wasn't kind of permitted, it was kind of a gray area, so we recommended that they go through the text amendment process to kind of clarify that. That text amendment then, as as mentioned, was adopted by the council at their January work session, and based off of that text amendment, accessory uses which are not allowed, which are not permitted as a principal use in the district, or is not traditionally associated with the religious institution, so I'll be subject to a special use permit. The proposed use would be for the Marvin's Women's Center, which is a nonprofit agency providing free and confidential services for women and men who are experiencing an unplanned pregnancy. The applicant provided me the information basically of what services they would offer and with peer counseling and pregnancy parenting, adoption and abortion education. The center would also offer the following service of free pregnancy tests, confidential peer counseling, pregnancy parenting and Bible study classes, and limited ultrasounds. They do not or would not do any type of SD, SEI testing, nor do they offer or refer for any abortions. Getting into the land use portion of it, so basically, the property, as I mentioned, was the old village hall. The existing use would either be considered civic or vacant, depending on how you want to look at it, considering the village was in that building just a little over 11 months ago. The surrounding properties are basically either residential or civic, especially with this, this specific building being in the middle of the Banks Presbyterian three acre track, or no, so not three acre 20, whatever it is. With that being said, all adjacent property owners were notified of the public hearing that's to be held on Thursday by the village council. That that letter was sent out on February 9. The Marvin Lock characteristics, you know, I kind of included those, but once again, the structure is not, the structure is not expanding or no new structures being built. It was conveyed to me that Banks has actually set aside $30,000 for renovations to outfit some of the building. Once again, like, we can't require that because the underlying zoning is still residential, even though it's identified in the heritage district boundary, this is not a rezoning, so we can't make them bring up the building to a, to a, to a new, to basically the Marvin here standard, because that language doesn't apply to them until they rezon. But they are doing their outfits to the building. Most likely, they'll have to do any type of interior improvements, anything to potentially bring it up to a, the code that would apply for this. I think the building was built in like 1960. But other than that, they would just basically be going into the existing space and be utilizing that for their services.
Are we allowed to see what the improvements are? But we're not.
No.
So it's, it's residential currently?
The zoning is residential, yes, but the, like, it's own Marvin, the R. Marvin Residential District. Religious institution is a special use within that district. The actual religious institution itself and Banks Presbyterian is an existing use they're grandfathered. However, since the accessory use is what is changing, that's why the special use permit is being applied for. We, since no new structure is being built, we do not have the authority to deal with elevations unless it's, like I said, unless it was a rezoning or if it was a new structure, like, for example, when we did the accessory structure language and we allowed for, like, detached garages or such to be located in the front yard with the with an approval of a special use permit, we put one of those specific conditions on there that it had to be the same looking characteristic of the existing structure with with it not being a new structure, we can't really then make them make aesthetic approvals to to an existing structure.
So they're asking, they're still in a residential, but asking for a special permit in residential?
Yes, a special use permit is for the specific use of the nonprofit under the religious institution, which is a special use already in the residential zoning district. This is where it gets into our whole zoning districts and stuff being.
So where do you look at it? Do we look at this as probably a religious establishment asking for this women's center?
Correct.
Is that the way we should look at it?
Yep.
Okay.
So getting into review and discussion. Once again, the special use permit is a process which allows planning board and village council to review and approve specific uses that are keeping with the intent and purpose of the zoning district may have substantial impacts on the surrounding area. Basically, they go through this process. I've kind of outlined the adopted text and want to kind of point out 151.69B to B. Religious institution accessory uses which are not permitted as a principal use in the district, so the actual use of like the women's center nonprofit is not a permitted use within the Marvin Residential District, just because it's limited to mainly residential agriculture and some other uses as a permitted by right use, and there's other special uses that include like government facilities, religious institutions, sports fields, and so on. With that being said, that these accessory uses that are not permitted or not traditionally associated with the religious institution shall be subject to the special use permit and adhere to the following restrictions. No merchandise or merchandise display shall be visible from outside the building. No accessory use requiring an overnight stay shall be permitted, excluding events associated with youth groups, scouting troops, and other events directly associated with persons or employees of that religious institution. And the third condition is that no standalone business or identification side pertaining to the accessory use shall be visible from outside the building. Signage permitted to be a part of the principal use existing structure, the signage for the principal use shall still comply with the regulations, and that's basically referencing our sign ordinance. And as you guys recall, that was per our discussion and part of the recommendation is that basically, we will allow signage if it's part of the overall arching signage plan for that religious institution, and the intent is that, once again, it's whatever that accessory use is, it's always going to be under that umbrella of the church.
So, sorry, just to clarify, because it's been a while since we've talked about it. If the church wanted to do a sign for the nonprofit, would they have to then submit a new, like, sign plan if they were going to add additional signs, or does that only talk about the one sign they've got in the very front?
If they were to do a new, any type of signage or new signage, basically, because, because it's still one property, even though it shows on the tax report that it's two, it is still one, it was done that way from it, just basically from the tax office standpoint, it's still all associated with one property. Banks would have to either basically, they would get a signed permit application from me, and it's all would be all administrative to add additional, like, Add additional like on their ground, existing ground mounted to put like and Marvin's and Marvin's Women's Center. Or they could get a new, propose a new sign. Ground mounted type sign that would have to comply with our ordinance and it still can include that same for the most part if it's. Basically, it's all, basically per our ordinance, you're only allowed one ground mounted sign per. Property per se. Like you're not, like, they wouldn't be able to have two different signs.
Even though it's technically two parcels?
Well, that's where it's technically one parcel.
They merged them?
They've always been merged. The way it shows up on the tax reports basically was done by Union County's Tax Office for taxation purposes because they rent that building. Like, if you look at the actual tax report, it says. Whatever, what's the acreage on?
No, I, I, I understand what they did tax wise, but.
It's not like.
Wasn't that like, wasn't that one of the issues that if they, if the property wasn't in two separate parcels, they could do whatever they kind of wanted there because it was.
That was kind of what, that was some of their initial thought. We still went through with the text amendment to do some clarification purposes and we still requested them to still do a special use because that text amendment got adopted. But yes.
Okay.
So. Getting into. The findings of fact with any special use permit, council has to adopt findings of fact. There's five of them. The first one is that the use when I'm. Material or endanger the public health or safety if located where proposed and developed according to plan. Staff finds that this proposed use will, you know, not endanger the public health, safety or welfare. Two meets all required conditions and specifications. Basically, that's referring to those three conditions I just mentioned. And based off of what the applicant has presented, staff finds that the proposed use meets all of these as well as if they do want to do a sign, it would still have to meet that specific condition. Three, the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding property or the use is a. Or the use is a public necessity. Staff finds that it will not substantially injure the value of adjoining properties because once again, it's an existing structure. And the use is not that intense to where. It's going to impact with it already being kind of in a row and one being in between two churches. You have a significant buffer because of the preserve behind it. And then you have. Three pond acres, which once again has a significant buffer in your, your property. But overall, based off of the use that's being proposed, it's very low impact per se. And so I, staff's determination is that it. Meets that criteria. And then four, the location and character of the use and is if developed according to the plan as submitted and approved will be in harmony with the area in which is to be located and will be in general conformity with the chapter and the village land use plan. Staff finds this to be consistent as well. Once again, since. When that property is identified on the future land use map as a heritage district, but specifically like a civic. Use, it's still intended to be under the umbrella of the church, the church. The church has conveyed to me and I've put this in the memo that they will be working hand in hand with this proposed use. So overall, it's, it's in accordance with those plans since we already identified that as civic on the land use map. It's and for the most part with our, with our ordinance since we adopted this language. And then five additional review, review criteria stated, once again, kind of go off of those three. They, they will comply, they are proposing to comply and obviously if approved, they will have to comply. With that being said, staff recommends approval with the. Staff recommends approval with the following conditions. Basically, the first three are. The. Ones already outlined in our ordinance, the next one being the general hours of operation of the center. I've actually updated this prior, after this being posted in your packet, but the other two conditions are. The general hours of operation to be eight AM to eight PM based off of the service they provided at their Monroe facility. That's the, I think they typically operate Tuesday, Thursday from like 10 AM to 2 PM and then Monday and Wednesday. From. Like, I think it was like, pretty much 10 AM to 6 PM, because I think they offer services for after work hours for the most part. So they, I ran this by the applicant. They are okay with that general hour operation from being from eight PM, eight AM to eight PM. The other additional. Condition that they were okay with, and this kind of then sets that parameter of what the use would be, would be no medical, no medical service shall be provided other than ultrasounds, pregnancy tests and counseling. So once again, it limits basically to what they already do. But this, as I mentioned, this does set the use. And so then if there is a change in you, let's say another nonprofit down the road that offers similar or maybe more intense. If it's similar or less intense, it would fall under the special use permit. If not, they would have to come before and get a. A separate special use for whatever that proposed tenant is. Basically, I said, this is setting that use standard for that accessory structure.
So what would happen if there's an emergency situation and someone just shows up at the facility? Will it be closed? Will they open doors?
What do you mean?
For example, in the women's shelter, a woman shows up, you know, with a baby that she doesn't want anymore.
Well, the, for my, I mean, if they're closed, they're closed. And like I said, this is a pretty low, I could say nonprofit and they offer these services. It's not like a. Full women's. Shelter or some type of service like. So I, I don't have a full answer on that, but at the same time, like, the intent is basically they provide what services were outlined in their application and nothing more than that.
I dropped the baby at his house, yeah.
Do we know of any similar operations like this?
So they, they, the overall arching like nonprofit is the Help Pregnancy Center. They have a location in Monroe and they're opening up a location in Indian Trail. They've been operating in Monroe for over, I think, 25 years. So. They, they, it's not, it's not a new, like, it's not like a new nonprofit. It's not a new type organization providing these services. They have been doing it for a while. They just wanted to branch out. And throughout Union County. So the simple answer is yes, there are other situations. It just still kind of breaks down to. At the end of the day, our zoning ordinance and how we define uses and how we kind of break out uses through districts. And at the current moment, when we adopted this text amendment, like. The goal was, hey, we're trying to do a, a Band-Aid and at the same time, address what their, of what their request was as we worked through kind of. Fully rewriting these ordinances.
So how does it work with the public hearing? Because you said that's Thursday? So if we vote tonight. Not knowing what the public hearing, I mean, I guess we don't, we've, we have to vote based on what's been submitted and.
Correct.
So it doesn't necessarily matter what the public hearing, like, what's the point of a public hearing if.
Well, they.
They meet the criteria.
Well, the council, every special use permit is a quasi judicial decision that is a council decision. So required by state law is that they, there has to be a public hearing. For special use permits. With that being said, and it being quasi judicial, typically that the intent of that is it's basically a hearing for property owners. That are surrounding it because they're kind of the ones that have direct stake in, in that. Yeah, it's, it's basically like a court hearing. They have to provide evidence on why they think, like, basically that finding a fact.
Right, right. It's about fact. It's not about opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so if we were, when we vote tonight, it's really just going to be about, do they meet the planning requirements? Do they meet our ordinance requirements?
You guys are making a recommendation, but yes, I mean, based off of what was presented and what. If you think it meets the, the ordinance and as well as potentially offering recommended conditions to the council. As I kind of, you know, those two additional ones to the three that's already outlined in the ordinance, because. Are any, with any special use permits, council has the authority to. Propose additional conditions within a. Reasonable right. And with that being said, and our attorneys, our attorney has reviewed that these, those two additional conditions are, in his opinion, are within their power on top of they, they have no problem with meeting those two. That criteria.
And you've heard nothing from the surrounding?
No, I have not. And if so, like I said, that will be, they, they have their opportunity to come on Thursday to the public hearing. And, you know, present their facts and present their, I mean, opinion facts, and then council can weigh that in their decision. But for the most part, especially these permits, if it complies and. Straightforward and unless, like I said, there's substantial evidence or facts presented on why it shouldn't be. Then council kind of. Will approve with, with the specific conditions either outlined in the ordinance or with the, within their power.
In order to give a recommendation. Is there an? Is there updated language? I see that this, right now on. The memo, it says seven to seven, which is actually going to be eight to eight. But then you also mentioned the medical. The additional, like, no medical. Is that somewhere that can be read off or is it, how would you even make the?
I think I said with the following conditions, because I want, that was kind of like, that's what the discussion is. They could just make a motion.
I can drop it in really fast.
And change that to eight to eight.
One second, I'll update that motion for y'all.
And then there's.
Yeah, the medical one's not in those bullets and.
Yeah, no, I, because when I submitted packets last week, I sent this memo to our attorney and we, he reviewed it. We discussed on. Yesterday. I wanted to make sure he was okay with everything, but. He was on a time crunch last week and everything, so we, we wanted to get this in your packet, but the only change was, was basically those two conditions.
That's a good one. The medical one's a good one.
As well as I sent this information to the applicant and the Help Pregnancy Center to review to make sure I got all hundred and they. Said, yes, everything in that memo of what they, the services they provide and their intent and their. I guess, level of.
The scope of what they do.
Yeah, scope, it was, it's all accurate, so. They had no problem with. With basically those two additional conditions mentioned.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts before we move to vote?
I, I just have one, if I can. This may have already been addressed. To you, Hunter, but. As I'm looking at the application papers and I see the September 29th. You know, the letter of intent. You know, it says Help Pregnancy Center. You also mentioned this one in Monroe and there's going to be one in Indian Trail. Then in the letter, it actually refers to it as called the Marvin's Women's Center. I've had some constituents say, is that kind of a good move? In other words, Marvin Women's Center as opposed to. Whatever it is, the help, you know, the Marvin Help Pregnancy Center. I don't know if that makes it any better. But the name Marvin in there, it might identify it as being part of a. The municipality, like this is something that's part of the government and be misconstrued in that way. Is that any kind of an issue to you or is it any kind of an issue to the board?
Hey, Bob, you're coming through really, really loud on our end.
Oh, okay. All right. Did everybody hear what I said?
What I'll say is we cannot legally, if, because Marvin is a. Is a place, is an, is an area, is a community, like, we cannot legally tell them that they can't have the word Marvin in their name. Now, if it was like the village of Marvin, then yes, we have that. That would be something that they, we would not allow because that is directly associating with the village, but the actual word Marvin. And being in Marvin, we can't control. It's the same as like, even though they're not in Marvin out on. Oh. Tom Short, there's the Marvin dentistry. Again, we don't, we don't own or copyright the name Marvin.
Valentine moving, which is in Indian, Indian land.
Yeah, so. So with that being said, that's some, I, I did receive a question about that, but that's something we can't really control.
Okay, I, I, and I was going to bring up about that dentistry. Name in there and I remember that was an issue that was brought up in a few council meetings ago, so. You know, it's good. All right, thank you.
I mean, I think, Bob, just as a, as a, you know, a counter to that. I think the Help, the Women, the Help Pregnancy Center, what's the, sorry.
Yeah.
That could end up raising other people's eyebrows. You know what I mean? It's just like. Can't win, so.
Very true. No, very true.
All right, anything else before we? Make a, make a move to a vote, whatever I just said, I'm tired. Good, Austin? Okay, anyone want to make a motion? No one's going to make a motion. Wow, I don't know. Is this political? Okay, I will make a motion then. I mean, if they've met all the criteria. You know? This is, this should not be political. It should be, do they meet the criteria? Yes, they meet the criteria, so. I will, I will make a motion to approve. The, I gotta see it now, sorry. I need to refresh. The memo.
You are on the public side.
Yeah, because I couldn't find the eScribe. Okay. So he needs to recuse first.
Okay, so let's do, let's do that first. So, Will, what is your reason for recusing yourself?
He's diagonally.
What's the, what's the, what's the side address? What's the address, the house number?
Yeah.
Okay, so now. So now someone, someone needs to make a motion to recuse Will from, from participating in this vote. Okay. And now you need a.
I'll second.
And you said Kelly seconded, okay. And now y'all need to vote.
All in favor of. Letting Will recuse himself. All right, so moved.
So now that Will's recused, you all can, you want, do you want me to, do you want me to read this to you and you can take some move?
How about I just, that's fine. Yeah, let's do that. Yeah.
All right. To recommend, motion to recommend approval to the village council with the following conditions. No merchandise. Or merchandise display shall be visible from outside the building. No overnight stay shall be permitted with this use. No standalone business or identification sign pertaining to the accessory use. Excuse me, shall be visible from outside the building. General hours of operation for the center are eight AM to eight PM. And no medical services shall be provided other than ultrasounds, pregnancy tests and counseling.
So moved. All right, do we have a second?
I second.
And all in favor? Motion passes. All right, well, that was fun.
Okay.
All right, ongoing text amendments. Hunter?
Well, this is going to be short. I'm still working on all these. The intent was. I wanted to have them done. I've been busy. I'm leaving for vacation tomorrow, so I've just been. Swamped with a lot of other stuff. I, I will have some draft of the pool equipment and a few other, the other items that we discussed last, last meeting for you guys during the March meeting. But other than that, still working through, work, working through sections and working through text. I'm just. The whole reason why I didn't bring anything further tonight was that. My goal is even though if I did with some of the small ones, it's not going to go to council and probably until May. Just because there's no use to have a public hearing, so we do have time. So we'll present it to you guys in March for further discussion. You guys can potentially make a recommendation there. Or we can, you know, table it. It's kind of a staff driven thing. I will say that I'm looking at quotes for UDO rewrite and so on. But mainly with any of these texts or these updates that we do will still be incorporated in the new zoning ordinance. Zoning ordinance regardless, for example, like the religious institution language and everything that we adopted. It's just trying to when, you know, that's a process within itself, so we're trying to, you know, keep putting Band-Aids or get things updated as we go, and that's kind of a. My goal from a staff level. Any questions on that? So, want to table that?
You don't necessarily need to table it just because.
No, there was no action request. All right.
All right, you want to just keep going with your planners update?
Sure can. So I got two things mainly uh to update you guys on. The first being. For the March meeting as well, we should have the, we should be considering or you guys will be reviewing and making a recommendation on the Windmore. Special use permit for their gated subdivision. That one will be a little different, obviously, from what you guys saw tonight because there are a whole lot more criteria for you guys to kind of review and. I have spoke with the applicant, spoke with the attorney and surveyor and then helping get all those required materials. And as long as they basically have them to me by the. Second week in March and it's anticipated that we'll have it on your guys' meeting for you guys to review and make a recommendation. But I, it was anticipated to be on this meeting. However, they don't have me all the stuff. I'm not going to bring it to you guys if we don't have it because it's shot in the dark because basically we did that ordinance and put all this play stuff in place to make sure that. The applicant has it done for their safety, for the villages, safety long term, everything, so. They're working through it and as long as they uh get that to me, that should be on your guys' next agenda. The second thing. That for you guys that don't know, the heritage subdivision was uh their pump station was denied by Union County last night. I know I I've received a lot of calls, emails, questions. I don't have any answers for the current moment on what that means for the development. I don't have any answers on what that means for. The um Heritage District as a whole. Uh, I will say.
Know why it was denied? Did they give a reason why it was denied?
You want my professional opinion or?
Oh, this is the good part.
I'd like both.
They, it was presented and ba- basically the background is is that in April of last year, the county stripped their ordinance for pump stations. It used to be pretty much all administratively if they met the criteria. The commissioners wanted to have authority in potentially reviewing those. When they adopted the new ordinance, they set methodology and parameters in place. Jones Holmes met all of those. They um. Had to basically do a cost benefit analysis of. Gravity feed versus installing the pump station and the long term cost. It was cheaper to still do the gravity or sorry, not the gravity, the pump station. Not to um include that the gravity option. Would feed to Broadmoor's pump station, which is pumped to twelve mile, which is where their capacity issue is at. The pump station would have been pumped to six mile in Mecklenburg County that. Capacity is not a current issue. With that all being said. They denied it based off of, in my opinion. A land use decision. Meaning that they basically took. Vill- Marvin's authority to approve land use because they reviewed it as. Impact on. Schools. And what was funny is that they approved a conditional zoning that had higher. A higher quote unquote dwelling unit per acre. Earlier in the meeting that would also go to these same schools. As well as the. The way it was presented because they did not give Ben and it wasn't a public hearing. There was public comment at the beginning of the meeting. They did not give an opportunity for the applicant to. Present their uh materials. But there was misinformation or not when I say misinformation, if. Some of the questions answered by the or asked by the Board of County Commissioners. Were not answered. A hundred or when I say a hundred percent, like there was some miscommunication between the staff and the commissioners and what was in the report. But yeah, that I mean, in my opinion, they made a land use decision. For the village. So.
So can I, can I ask a question because um? To me, this is. This is um. Basically, basically, Union County is determining what we can and can't do.
Correct.
Village, so what does is the has the council, I mean, this just happened last night, but is the council planning on addressing this with them and?
And that's where, you know.
I mean, because don't our tax dollars go there and what are we, what are we using? What are our tax dollars?
Yeah, and I just want to clarify like the reason.
There is none.
The the village was asked to, you know, be there, um myself and Christina and uh the mayor went. We, we spoke on behalf of the district because of the success of the district, the, you know, how this has been a goal for the village dating back to two thousand four. And we finally kind of were able to establish, you know, the language, the small area plan, the land uses that we want, all that stuff. And how this does kind of put the district as a whole in in kind of a question mark. Because.
Marvin Development as a whole, it doesn't even, I mean, this is like more than just the district.
Well, that that pump station that Jones Holmes was proposing would have serviced their property, Lett's property and as well as a few of the adjoining properties. So i- in theory, if you look at the acreage between Odell Previs and Lett, it was going to service fifty percent of the district. As well as not including properties that are were not in the district and. At this time, I mean, my determinant, like, I don't know how it's going to impact the district overall. You know, I I will say this is kind of just a hard Heritage District update in general is that. I have been been in conversation with Venture and Ravi and so, you know. Some of the property owners on this side of the Heritage District. And I don't think they're going to have the same issue with sewer because basically if everything's gravity, it doesn't, it's all kind of administrative. Yeah, and. Yeah, we're gravity here. Really, everything on this side of Newtown is gravity's there. Uh, I have had some conversation with uh counties um waters, water and sewer staff as well as uh Mr. Venture. About his property. I will say Tim is in the process of getting a basic generic kind of preliminary plan, looking at grading. And looking at utility to see his gravity connection points to have further conversation with the county before. He proceeds because ob- obviously the goal is is to not have pump stations and that that goal was. Prior to even Jones Holmes's um. Application consideration. It was. We knew that the county, you know, they were taking this route. Broadmore was always intended or supposedly intended to be a regional pump station. Broadmore's not even the pump station. Their sewer permits are on hold right now. So with that being said, it's like basically from my understanding of. The development within the Heritage District and gravity feed. There's still hope, but right now with that specific residential development and potentially even for Lett's and and so on, I I don't have an answer. I will say that council. I think basically between Christine and I and. Some of the requests from councils, like we are looking at. Options and like I said, it's not necessarily. It's not directly for Jones Holmes or that property. It's looking at how this district, you know, what are what are the ramifications for the district as a whole? So that's really all my answers right now because I don't have anymore. It just happened last night and it's kind of been, that's what's consumed most of my day today. There was an hour before, before that discussion, there was an hour. Plus long presentation from the um interim manager. To them about their current status of their infrastructure and their. Ramifications of them rolling back the rates and basically them not having money to do projects. And in my opinion, I also think that then weighed even though there were its two con- two completely separate type decisions at the hand. I think that kind of play because it's looking at the sewer infrastructure as a as a whole, so. I don't know. I know that, I mean, the county is working on a lot of different stuff with their sewer stuff and trying to. Figure out how to pay for stuff or what their next steps are. Like I said, we're, we're kind of at the graces with them with it being their utility system. Uh, and I'm not a hundred percent sure like. Really what more we can kind of do outside of, you know, work with the county um to. Just, I mean, ensure we we're, we're, we're working together for a common good for the most part, like. But at the end of the day, it's still, it is still the decision of the elected bodies.
Does South Carolina have a? A station anywhere nearby?
I'm not a hundred percent sure because I want to say some of. If Firethorn gets, does the portion of Firethorn in South Carolina either gets pumped back in the North Carolina and or. Some of Firethorn goes to South, it's weird. I do.
Trade are some of our.
So. We have, I mean, the the county has that agreement with Mecklenburg County for. The two point five million or three million gallons a day uh to go to six mile. I know in conversation with the county back last spring and summer, I mean. There, there is potentially uh options to look at. To uh doing an agreement with South Carolina for, you know, to take some of it. I I don't know, but. The two things that the county commissioners voted on last night was they not doing the Crooked Creek. Treatment facility, which would help with some of their capacity and they're making the twelve mile creek. Expansion very limited. And twelve mile creek, to my understanding, is already at capacity, if not over. Um, from what I talked with. One of the property owners that was there last night, I I, you know, they have contract out, I mean, them and Jones Holmes have their own contract obligations that. You know, it's, you know, however they decide. From my understanding from the applicant is that. They're not necessarily. Done with a potential project at that location or or both of the properties. But obviously from their decision, it is a financial decision on them because it's it's money tied up or however, like sometimes they they might have to cut their losses.
Just a reminder, if anyone's asked a question, make sure your microphone is on.
From a Marvin zoning and land use standpoint, so with that zoning being approved. Back in August for the Heritage Subdivision for, you know, within the Heritage District. Basically, what happens is is that there, there's a vested right that was in the original signed development agreement and part of their approval, so basically like. That plan is kind of vested. I can't remember if it's five or seven years off the top of my head. If Jones Holmes were to. They have the option to potentially terminate that development agreement. The vesting to an extent still stays. If another developer came in and wanted to basically buy those plans from Jones Holmes, they could. But uh, basically like. Without, without sewer, I don't know really what's gonna happen. I know that. Yeah, and Ru- Russ was there last night and I will say, I mean, that that was my first kind of gut because Russ did donate. Just out of his own right, that that right away for that, the leg of metal arc. Uh, from my understanding too is that, yes, I mean, there is. There is still an opportunity for Jones Holmes potentially still build like thirteen homes on Septic on Russ's property specifically. But with that being said, I'm not, and I'm not sure where Jones, I haven't had a conversation further with Ben. I'm not, you know. I'm not sure where the applicants at, you know, what their their next steps are. The other thing I'll mention is there was about ten other developers in Union County at that meeting last night, all kind of in the same vote as Jones Holmes. And we're not, we're basically like. There's no chance for them if. Jones Holmes didn't approve with following, if not going above beyond what the county set their methodology and standards to be, so. I don't know what's gonna happen.
So in other words, a lot of people are gonna lose a lot of money. Or that the the potential is not there.
Well, the county. Elected body feels like, you know, they want to slow down the growth, which is, you know, understandable, but. In my once again opinion, and I know this is, this goes uh beyond Marvin because I know that Weddington was, I mean, I know that all the. Municipalities really on the western side are dealing with the same issues is that. Now that the county. Has this kind of power with. Infrastructure improvements and and expansions and approvals, it does then limit the municipality's actual. Legal right uh as being an incorporated municipality and regulate land use and development. On how to how they develop, like basically.
Because I I would say that Marvin and Weddington are have been controlling development. I mean, we've. Responsible. We've been responsible developers, so like, why are we then going to get punished for actually making sure that?
Well, and that was the other, that was another thing that was. That was the other thing that was mentioned in the. Presentation to the county last night for Jones Holmes thing is that they basically admitted to. Not planning for this area. At all. Like basically, based off of their old sewer master plan or whatever. They never planned for this area.
So, okay, I guess I need to go research government like, you know, can we secede? Like, can we go into another like? I mean, like. Let's D N X, yeah. Let's hold hands with Weddington and just be like, let's do our own thing.
Well, like I said, that's, that's really, I don't have much more. I mean, like I said, it's just kind of an on, we'll just have to see what happens over the next couple weeks, months. Once again, from what Jones Holmes decides to do, what uh if, you know, Tim gets. A kind of a sketch plan, see what that may entail and look like, but overall. I, that's all I kind of know.
I have one more question. What's the impact of the tra- on this on the traffic circle?
It shouldn't have any impact.
Okay.
Because Russ donated that land in good faith. So.
They can't withdraw all the.
No, he can't. He can't say now he doesn't want to donate it because that right away has already been signed off on.
So uh, no taxation without representation. We're gonna take the DC standpoint.
But with that, since the traffic circle was brought up.
That's okay.
It is anticipated. As they have been relocating utilities, I believe that actual construction is supposed to start in April, May. During that April, May timeline, and this is all being conveyed from DOT, so if it changes, don't look at me and say you said this because that's. This is what DOT is informed us.
Say that one more time. DOT is informative. What, what's the time?
The construction of the actual roundabout will start in April. During April and May, it's my understanding that the work being done will be done with. Lane closures or like not actual the whole intersection being closed, so they'll, you know, be out there directing traffic and so on. And then I believe in June, once school's out and everything, then it's the whole intersection will be shut down and there'll be detours. And I think it's six to eight weeks and the goal is to have it completed and done by um start of school, so.
Homeowners hiking over the barriers.
From. What do you mean by announcements? No idea. I mean, like I said, they've been out there doing. Utility stuff, so I mean, they've, they've, they've been starting. Oh dude, their website's insane to find it's or to navigate, but I will say like. The bids came back, the bids were open. I think they awarded the contract to Blythe. There. I think basically DOT for my DOT's processes, once it's awarded. There's roughly like three to five months for the contractor to get all the required documents and insurances and all this stuff. And then like basically that formal contract is signed. That formal contract, from my understanding, should be signed in the next week or two, if it hasn't already, and then potentially they'll announce it, but for the most part, like, and Blythe's done a lot of projects for DOT. I mean, obviously they're doing the four eighty-five stuff like. It's just a procedural thing, but it's still that the the construction timeline, it was always even during the bid process of the construction timeline. The construction actually start in April. So. No, I'm sure when we kind of do figure that out, definitely we'll, we'll be pushing that out as much information.
Or once we get a letter, I'll tell you. By the way.
One, one more question. Have you talked to our attorneys to see whether we have any legal standing to challenge what Union County's doing?
Yes. I know that was mentioned this uh that Christina did, I mean, just kind of like. what, what are, what can we do as a village for a standpoint of like, for the betterment of the, I mean, the district, the development and so on. Um, but I, I'm not sure.
Or even expand it and band together with the other impacted municipalities.
Well, that's what we miss for, and they meet tomorrow, or Thursday. With the Western Union Municipal Alliance. They meet to talk about all problems in Western Union County once a month. And they meet Thursday, and I believe this is going to be.
Very interesting.
Yeah.
You would think.
Other than that, that's all the updates I have, um, I think. So.
And there's a, I don't believe there were any action items. Alright, so let's go around for board member comments. Will. It's a man of many words tonight.
Um, I've got one comment slash question, I suppose. I'm wondering about what the roundabout, since, once that does get commissioned, is there any other additional movement on taking over Newtown Road, lowering speed limits, limiting trucks?
Yes, it's still council has been discussing it. We're, I mean.
Lately, it's been the context of the G E O.
Okay.
Got it. To basically get, get it up to, to our, to what our standard would be because DOT doesn't wanna do it at the current time. But, but yes, there's still conversation, but at the end of the day, it's like, from our standpoint, we don't wanna take over something that's gonna be a liability. And if DOT's not, it's not on their paving schedule or maintenance schedule for resurfacing or, or necessary improvements, but with the roundabout being done, 800, I mean, probably almost about a quarter mile, not a quarter, maybe a little bit less, of Newtown will in theory get resurfaced. As well as, I mean, if the Jones Holmes development goes in, they would, they had their transit, I mean, so that would have been one step in the direction to lower the cost of what it would be to, to get it up, but other than that, I, that's all, that's all I got with that one, but the, I know the conversation is still being had. With the, doing a bond, conversations with DOT on the improvements and, and so on.
Thank you. Aside from that, no comments then. Appreciate the work y'all are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Alright, and, uh, no comments for me except, um, enjoy your vacation. It's been much, much deserved. And Bob, yep. The voice of Bob.
Uh, yeah, thank you, everybody, for participating, uh, you know, tonight. And, uh, to answer the question about Newtown Road.
Hey, Bob, you're, you're coming through loud again.
Am I, let me reduce the, the sound. Does my sa- does it sound less now that I reduced the volume on my phone? Can you hear me now?
No, it, it hasn't reduced it, but.
Wow, okay. I'm gonna hold it way back here. Can you hear me okay? Am I not screaming?
No, you're fine.
You're good.
Okay. On the Newtown Road, that has always been, we have been in discussion as a council uh, to take control in some way, in form, in the future. That's the only way that we're gonna control the traffic and reduce the speed limit. So, you know, all I can say is stay tuned. We are talking about that. But otherwise, uh, thank you for your input, folks.
Awesome, thanks, Bob. Alright, um, well, if there's nothing else, um, could we have a motion to close our meeting?
At 6:59.
Alright, all in favor? Alright, thank you, everybody.